All right, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission CIP Committee Regular Meeting, Wednesday, February 24th, 2021. Are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you. Would you please do roll call?
I sure will. Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Ms. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
And Mr. Theodore?
Here.
Thank you.
And item number four, approval of minutes, we have none at this time, so we'll move on to citizen comments. Eric?
Mr. Chairman, public comments concerning today's agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the town's open town hall portal. The public comment period closed Tuesday, February 23rd at 4:30 PM. At the conclusion of the open town hall portal, there were two citizens' comments. Citizens who wished to speak at the meeting had to call in no later than noon on Friday, February 23rd. No citizens signed up to speak at the meeting.
Thank you. And everybody received the comments that were posted? All right, we'll move on to new business. Item A, Capital Improvements Program Fiscal Year 2021 Update.
Todd, I'm gonna jump in first, just to kind of do an introduction and overview. And then, we're gonna approach this as a team, a CIP team, between staff and committee as we move forward with this meeting, a meeting coming up on March 11th, and then throughout the remainder of the year, we've got some ideas. You know, unfortunately, some of this conversation started early this year with Scott, who's no longer here. I feel a little inadequate feeling in for him, but I'll do the best I can. So what we have decided to try and do is to develop a discussion with the CIP committee throughout the year to help us determine a rolling list of priorities. You know, rather than come to you sort of once or twice a year in a very short window for you to make a recommendation to the planning commission, who then makes a recommendation to council for what project should be considered for funding in the upcoming cycle, is to really develop a meaningful 10-year CIP program. We have the benefit of having just adopted a new comprehensive plan, which included a Parks and Rec master plan, and so a lot of exciting initiatives and projects will come out from that effort. And so, we're trying to match up the comprehensive plan and the output there from recommendations with the CIP process and program. And then ultimately, I believe our new town manager would like to get us to where we have a real meaningful strategic plan that council and the community would then have expectation on what's gonna happen in the next few years. So, we're trying to match these efforts up. Leadership at the town has been talking about trying to match up the project planning with the project funding capacity and then project management. And so, we developed this more seamless process, and that's a goal that we have to develop long-term. And so, what we're gonna walk through with the CIP committee today, and then hopefully with the committee throughout the year, will look something like this. We're gonna introduce the CIP for discussion for the development of priority projects for fiscal '22, okay? Because we need to have that information to help us develop for the budget, upcoming budget cycle. And that's, that should be similar to what you are used to if you've been through the process before. And I believe what Scott would normally do is give you an update on what we did based on your recommendations from last year, what new candidate projects are on the initial list for your consideration for priority development. And then, we'll come back to you again, I think on March 11th, is when we have another meeting scheduled with the CIP committee, where we can, between now and then, add some additional projects for consideration, have more meaningful discussion after you've had this overview, this update, and this introduction to this new initial list, to get to where on March 11th, the committee may be in a position to recommend what they believe are the priorities to the planning commission, who will then, in late March, go through this, a similar exercise to recommend those projects for funding consideration to be included in the budget. Long-term, and I know this was part of what Scott had talked about even last year, and we likely would have implemented if it weren't for COVID and some interruptions, is to have a more meaningful discussion based on our new comp plan, and then the projects that were listed in what we call the CNAP, Capital Needs Assessment Program, and that's where we carried all of the projects that kind of have been identified from plans and initiatives that we've been involved in over the years. I think at last look, there was about 99 items in that CNAP. I think it's time to go through and scrub it. There's probably projects that were identified maybe in the 90s that no longer have any relevance, and we should kind of trim the fat and eliminate those projects if they're no longer relevant, identify those that are worthy for further discussion, and then those projects that we absolutely, positively should keep in the bullpen and bring forward for consideration, trying to make the process just a little bit more efficient. And with the benefit of the new plan and direction and a new town manager trying to be a little more strategic with our action with the committee, the planning commission and council going forward. So that's how we're, we'd like to move through with the CIP committee and work with you throughout the year to achieve these, these sort of touchpoints and accomplishments where we need you to weigh in and help us guide the CIP going forward. I'm gonna let Jeff go through, and if there are any, if there are no questions about kind of that higher level overview or introduction, the plan now is to have Jeff give you an update on the fiscal '21 projects, so you can get a snapshot of where we are.
Before, Jeff, before you start, Sean, had, had our CIP group in the past two or three years, have we looked at that 10-year plan? Or is this something that's kind of a new introduction? I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, so I believe Scott would always share kind of a very basic spreadsheet. Really, the focus with the CIP committee was what are the priorities that you believe should be funded for, you know, for the upcoming fiscal cycle? But I think in order for anyone to make a informed decision, the more information you have, at least as far as from a program standpoint, on a funding capacity standpoint, the better off we'll be.
Yeah.
Now, again, CIP committee and planning commission don't get into the fiduciary component, components of this, but I think having that program will help everyone be more informed, and I think it will help us articulate where projects and programs should be slotted, you know, for the 10-year cycle.
Yeah.
So I think it's important, and Scott was moving in this direction, Scott and I had discussions even earlier this year about, about working with the CIP committee in this direction after, once we got through this initial prioritization, to kind of come back to you later this year through the fall to kind of, you know, to come to where we've got a streamlined list of projects, more meaningful list of projects, and also the development of that 10-year program for consideration. So, that was kind of the intent there, Tom.
Okay, yeah, and if I recall, he did bring that up to me, and I think he even brought it up last year, but COVID, you know, we were able just to get through the fiscal year items, so, okay, thank you for the update.
Is there any other questions for me on that sort of overview, and not just what we want to accomplish here in the short term this month, but in the, in the long view? If not, I'm turning it over to Jeff.
Any, any other committee members? Mark, you're muted.
I was just gonna say, so today, it's really receiving the update on '21, and to start to work on '22, or wait until you guys are more ready?
Yeah, so, update on '21, and then, a little bit further down in the memo was the initial list for '22 consideration. And so, it's introducing that to you, saying, here's kind of the thinking, here's things that were near the top or at the top last year that didn't get selected to start your thinking. We'll work over the next week to get you some more information in preparation of the meeting that's scheduled for March 11th. And at that meeting, have the committee bless what they believe should be priorities in their view, and move that on to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, if there's no other question, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff, who's gonna give you an update on the '21 projects, and then walk through the initial list for '22.
All right, good afternoon, committee, Chairman Theodore. If I may, just say a few words about Scott, I know Sean mentioned him. He was a great engineer, a great public servant, a great boss, a great friend. He devoted 30 years of his career to making this island better for all of us, better place to live, and we sure do miss him. And as Sean said, we will try to do our best here packaging up this CIP for this year and the years to come. So, I'm gonna share my screen, and in the memorandum we sent to you regarding the FY21 projects, these are active projects under construction or soon to be under construction, and I will give you a brief status of them. If you have any questions, please jump in and let me know. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, good. Fire Station 2 in Sea Pines, this will be completed in May. This project completes a program of replacing all seven of the fire stations on Hilton Head, so we're very proud to have that done. Portillo Tennis Courts Rehab Phase 2, that will be done by May as well. Town Hall Building D renovations, that is the old courthouse building down at the end on the left. Renovations are complete, and the engineering division will be moving into that space next week. The decorative traffic signal mast arms, these are the brown fluted mast arms you see up and down the William Hilton Parkway and Pope Avenue, replacing the one at Gumtree Road in William Hilton. We've received bids, and will issue a notice to proceed next week, and we'll have that done by May. Arrow Road resurfacing and adding a right turn lane. This is coming out of the operations budget. Wanted to let folks know about the work, though. This was included in the recent budget amendment by town council. We will be resurfacing Arrow Road from the end of the state maintained portion, which is near Signes and the Greenery, up to Bristol Park. And we will also be adding a devoted right turn lane at Palmetto Bay Road, as the traffic engineers recommended this will make function and flow better at that intersection. Summit Drive realignment is a project that was just born in the fall. There was no notion or foresight of this project last year when developing the CIP, and it came about when the county chose to impose a decal system at their convenience centers. They contacted the town in October and requested roadway improvements to make this function better, and so this is gonna be a partnership, and we have developed plans for the project, but we, we need agreements executed by town council and county council before we proceed with construction. The Islanders Beach Gazebo, this is another project that came about during the year. Town council asked us to insert this into the program. We have an architect underway designing the structure, and we will begin construction in June and have it done by August. Park upgrades, which includes Islanders Beach Gazebo, it's a project under that category, but we also completed new restrooms at Crossings Park in the Meadow Soccer Field area, and those were completed last fall. We have pathway and parking enhancements in the Shelter Cove area. We're gonna create 53 new parking spaces under the power line easement across from the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office on the Broad Creek side, and we will be connecting pathways in that vicinity from US 278 back to Veterans Memorial. We will be realigning, widening, improving some of the pathways, adding baller lighting, adding a timber, a boardwalk along the marsh there, not out into the marsh, but, but parallel to it to connect the other pathway system. And that work was also fully funded in the budget amendment from town council a few weeks back, and we plan to go to bid in March and have that completed by the summer. The dirt roads program, that, we have two roads that have been in acquisition phase for a good while now, but Mitchellville Road and Pinefield Road are the two that the town attorney is working on. He has sent out donation request letters to the folks on Mitchellville Road who have rights to that right of way. Once the public right of way is acquired, then we will schedule the paving of those roads to install storm drainage infrastructure and an asphalt surface. And the last one on this update list is William Hilton Parkway and Automobile Place. This is the old Mercedes Volvo dealership. The town acquired that property, and we received funding in the budget amendment here from town council to, we're gonna remove the driveways on William Hilton Parkway, disconnect those, realign the pathway as needed, do some prep work on the site, remove old concrete, et cetera. And part of that funding is gonna include a study, we're gonna look at pathway safety and enhancements through that corridor, Beach City down to Dillon Road. You have any questions on those?
Any questions from committee members?
No.
I had a couple of questions for you, Jeff. Was the, does the Shelter Cove pathway and parking enhancements, does that include, seem like some of our previous meetings, the pathway that runs along the south side of, I don't know if it's still called Marina or Mall Drive, there across the street from the gas station, was that gonna be upgraded?
Um, no, sir, not in this current project. This project extends from Shelter Cove Park around to Beaufort County Sheriff's Office, let's say, on that portion, the westward or northern portion of Shelter Cove Lane. One of the FY22 pathway projects, though, we're listing there, is the pathway you're talking about from Kroger Gas Station Starbucks area, back past Newport to the Shelter Cove Park.
Yeah. Okay, and then, the William Hilton Parkway Automobile Place, does that include taking out that, that old street?
Um, not Automobile Place proper, you know, it's a dead-end street right now behind the, I think there's two developments there, Jay Banks Building and another medical type office building. But, no, that street will stay intact, and the plan is to create a street, a right of way or access easement coming off Main Street to connect Automobile Place to Main Street instead of William Hilton Parkway.
Okay, all right, thank you. So it's really just taking out the access to that parking area?
Yes, sir, yeah, disconnecting 278 William Hilton Parkway from that, eliminating the curb cuts and smoothing out the pathway.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else with any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, and then, you wanna move on to the '22 draft?
Yes, sir. We have these in categories, you know, major infrastructure, major project types, and the first one we have is pathways. The first two items listed for consideration are what we type as programmatic enhancements. Accessibility and safety enhancements are something we wanna, you know, continue looking at, and we work with the Bicycle Advisory Committee on identifying these and trying to make improvements where needed. These may be intersection improvements, better signage, better site visibility, et cetera, better pavement markings. We've carried that for a while, and we would like to continue carrying that item.
And if you, if you don't mind, and that's where there's been like an earmark for about $100,000 every year for that item?
Um, yes, sir, yeah, $100,000 has been the typical funding for that the last few years.
Thank you.
And crosswalk lighting, we've specified this at unsignaled crosswalks along William Hilton Parkway. We installed the pilot project at Yacht Cove last year. That was fully intended to be a pilot project. It grew in scope and cost from what we originally had foreseen, mostly due to SE DOT specifications and requirements on lighting up an intersection. We could not just install one lamp at each end of the crosswalk and call it good. The DOT had standards and criteria in which they required us to light up the entire intersection, and it's mostly for motorists coming in there not to hit just an abrupt wall of light. So, we completed that project, and we are due, staff is to go back to town council to further discuss a path forward on this program. We did a, an online survey on our website to poll the public in what they thought of the lights, as far as their effectiveness, their aesthetic, et cetera. So we have that polling data, and we went back to committee, but we are due a visit to town council with this item to re-discuss it before we go forward in a full-fledged program to install lights at these other intersections. And there are eight remaining, just so you know. These are crosswalks along William Hilton Parkway, US 278, not at a traffic signal.
And does the eight include these three?
Excuse me?
Do the eight include these three that you've outlined?
Uh, yes, sir, they sure do. These, the, in a North Ridge and Palmetto Parkway, I've got two combined there. This is an area with foot traffic due to multifamily developments nearby and, and commercial developments on the other side of each road, frankly. I know there's, there's developments down Matthews Drive, Tappy Walk, et cetera, so you have residential on both sides, you have commercial on both sides, and there's nighttime foot traffic in that area. So we would recommend those be the next two crosswalks to be lit, and given their proximity to each other and DOT criteria, they may require that the lights, you know, merge together for that whole area. That's something to be determined with the DOT engineers.
Just so we know, have an idea of budget, what was the cost of the Yacht Cove Experiment Program outside of the easement acquisitions?
Um, construction was $100K, a little over $100K, and I wanna say with, with design and survey and easement acquisitions, et cetera, I'll have to go back and look at that, but I believe it was in the 175 neighborhood.
Thank you.
And there are eight total. We can decide at what rate we wish to pursue these with funding, and town council dictating that, but staff would recommend North Ridge and Palmetto Parkway be the first two to be constructed. And the next subcategory of pathways is new pathway segments. We haven't built a lot of new infrastructure on pathways recent years due to funding, but these are new pathways to be constructed. US 278 Business, William Hilton Parkway, from Arrow Road to Village at Wexford is a project that staff, we procured survey and began design on that several years ago, and it was shelved due to funding. I think this is an important segment of pathway, given the high tourist volumes of foot and bicycle traffic and shops at Village at Wexford and along US 278 down to Arrow Road. That's one we could, as I say, we have a head start with the old preliminary design, we could move very quickly on that one. The second project is Main Street, and as the committee rule will call, we discussed this one at length last year, this is currently a private right of way. This is from Whooping Cane Roundabout up to Wilborn Road, and the commercial POA currently owns that right of way. They have a dedication to the town pending, and this is another item we're due to revisit town council and discuss. But should that right of way come in our possession and, you know, become a public right of way, then this would definitely be a high priority pathway project for construct. Serves commercial properties, links residential to the school campus, et cetera. The next project is the Shelter Cove Lane segment, in which Chairman Theodore mentioned, from Starbucks Kroger Gas Station back to the park. This is also in a private right of way, I will say, but we, we would intend on acquiring an easement. We would ask the Shelter Cove POA to donate an easement and take that existing pathway, which is, it is too narrow, there's slope issues, root upheaval, et cetera. There are issues with that pathway we'd like to correct, make it meet current standards in terms of width and slope, but it would serve the, the public pathways on the major thoroughfare there of William Hilton Parkway, connect back to a town park. And then beyond that, as I mentioned, the project to be done this summer, the other half of that is connecting to 278 back up near the sheriff's office. The next project is US 278 Business, William Hilton Parkway, from Shelter Cove Lane at the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office, along the Broad Creek side up to Dillon Road near McDonald's. And as you're well aware, this is currently a sidewalk at the back of curb. Due to right of way restrictions, property, trees, et cetera, that's probably just gonna be a widened sidewalk in a lot of the areas, you know, to make that eight or 10 foot. If we can get a planting strip in there, of course, we will, and once you cross Matthews Drive at Follyfield, in the vicinity of the church property and the Ashmore Track, we would be able to get the pathway away from the road much better. Another long pathway along US 278, Gardner Drive to Jarvis Park Lane. When we constructed the pathway in front of the Oaks and Southwood Park Terrace, et cetera, we stopped at Gardner Drive, and the next leg of that, the next logical phase was to continue north up to Jarvis Park Lane. Beyond that, we have, the next two projects are Lagoon Road Pathway, this would be on the shit yard side of Lagoon Road and would connect all the way back around to North Forest Beach Drive. This project and the Boggy Gut Pathway were both born out of the Circle to Circle Committee a few years ago. The Boggy Gut Pathway, as we call it, it's a pathway that would connect Office Park Road in the vicinity of USC B back to Woodhaven Drive behind the Catholic Church there. That pathway would be very expensive, frankly, it would be primarily a raised timber boardwalk through the wetlands and the forest back there. The last four, Singleton Beach Road, Jonesville Road, Arrow Road, Archer Road, these, you know, have been on lists for a long time. The Singleton Beach Road, that's one we believe in, there's a Chapin Linear Project, Chapin Linear Park Project, that is, that doesn't really capture the Singleton Beach Road segment, so if we wanted to connect the Singleton Beach neighborhood up to US 278 and the Chapin Park area, we would need a new pedestrian facility along that road. And Jonesville, it's a, it's a long dead-end road, all residential, but that's been on the list for a long time. Arrow Road and Archer Road, Arrow Road, we have a pathway under the power line easement behind Arrow Road and between Wexford Plantation, and that, that's fine, and it functions, but a lot of folks ride along Arrow Road still, whether they don't know about that pathway, you know, we need better signage perhaps, but, but anyway, there's been a push in past years to get a pathway along Arrow Road for folks coming and going from Palmetto Bay in that folks coming and going from Palmetto Bay in that corridor. And Archer Road just connects Arrow Road to Palmetto Bay. Are there any questions on the pathways?
Any committee members? Jeff, on the existing pathway that runs down the power easement there off of Arrow Road, are there interim connections down that corridor?
There is a, there is a bridge and a connection to Signe's Restaurant, I believe. Yeah, about midway on that pathway, I think you can connect into Signe's parking lot and get onto Arrow, but there's no pathway on Arrow Road.
That's correct, Jeff.
Okay.
That's one consideration is, you know, was, you know, that runs for like a mile, doesn't it? You know, that if there were some interim points of connection, it might be more visible than at the ends.
If, yeah, for instance, you know, that one at Signe's, if we created a pathway on Archer Road and, and connected over, we could cross Arrow and then get to the power line pathway. Yes, that, that could be an option.
Okay. All right. If there's any more questions on that, we move on to the next program.
Yes, sir. Roadways, Main Street, rehabilitation of Main Street. Again, this is the private portion from Whooping Crane to Wilborn. And this project would be predicated on the, the acceptance of a public right-of-way there. The POA has offered the right-of-way for dedication. There are a lot of repairs necessary. And, and it was under committee and council consideration. And the question, I think, right now is, should the POA have to pay or improve, upgrade the facilities before we take it over? But should we get that street, that portion, then a major rehabilitation of that roadway would be number one project we would recommend. Turn lane extensions, these are relatively minor, but where we have left turn lanes into the median coming off William Hilton Parkway, we have a few listed there that are deficient, too short for traffic volumes and stacking such that, you know, cars get off the pavement into the median and rut up the edges. And so we would design a lengthened turn lane, get that perimeter with the DOT and install that. The Dirt Road Program, I mentioned Mitchellville and Pinefield as the two active roads that we are pursuing for acquisition. You know, it's called the Dirt Road Paving Program, but the first step for the town is to acquire the right-of-way. All of these roads on the list right now are privately owned and, and lie, you know, within private rights of ways. So what the town does, we do the title search, find out all of the rightful owners who have rights to that property or that rights of way. And, and we try to acquire it by asking them to donate. We, we've ranked these roads where we think we would get the most benefit, given, you know, the most people served, et cetera, and the conditions of the road. And the next roads we have on there, per the rankings, are Alice Perry Drive and Horse Sugar Lane, which are both in the Mitchellville area, and then Amelia Drive, which is located off of Squaw Pope Road. I just mentioned those, excuse me, I just mentioned those two active acquisition projects we have. And another thing, just to, to remind the commission and, and the general public may be listening, is that we had pursued in recent years, right-of-way acquisitions on Aiken Place, Alfred Lane, Coby Court, Murray Avenue, and Outlaw Road. In the past few months, the town has revised the LMO to preserve or grandfather density development rights for properties along these roads under this program. So one of the things we heard when we held public meetings and talking about whether owners would be willing to donate land for a public right-of-way, there was concern about loss of density rights. If, if the owner gives up, let's say 20 feet or whatever the, the width is at the front of the property and that becomes a public right-of-way, then their property has shrunk and, and they may not be able to develop as many units per zoning as they would have. So we changed the LMO to address that, alleviate those concerns. And what we plan to do this spring would be to re-engage the property owners on those streets of failed past efforts and see if they would reconsider and try to spark some interest back in those streets. And the last, last project we have listed here is Dillon Road, as you're coming from the convenience center to William Hilton Parkway at the Hampton Inn, adding a formal right-turn lane there. I know that's rutted up and there are bicycle, right-turning vehicle conflicts, et cetera. So, so we would like to improve that, make it more safe, provide adequate pavement, et cetera.
Anybody have any questions on the roads?
Hey Jeff, this is Mark. I'm, I'm wondering, with, with the roadway acquisitions, is there a drainage component to that in terms of the capital pricing?
Yes, sir. If we acquire the right-of-way, we will install storm drainage to meet current standards. One thing, if, if we foresee that the road drains to a drainage way that is currently private, you know, we may request easements on that drainage ditch or outfall as well. But, but when we go to engineer and design and construct roadway improvements, yes, sir, we will definitely include storm drainage.
That typically goes with utilities as well, doesn't it, Jeff?
Yeah, most of these roads have sewer with the Hilton Head Public Service District Sewer Expansion. But, you know, most of these have utilities in them already. If it's a public right-of-way, that would make their, their rights greater if it's a public right-of-way. I think they could do more as they wish if, if they come to us for an encroachment permit. But, but we would include the pavement, shoulders, and storm drainage infrastructure per the LMO.
Any other questions? Jeff, on the Main Street, one, I assume the pathway and the road improvements kind of go hand in hand?
Yes, sir.
And then from my observation, it appears that there's really no maintenance going on now, so every day those roads get worse and worse?
Yeah, minimal. I mean, you know, I drove through there the other day. I, I know they try to keep the potholes patched, but, but yeah, the roads are degrading every year and, yeah, it's a big capital outlay, I think, for us to rehab them once we take acquisition.
Yeah, it just seems like there's some fairly large areas of where the layered asphalt is worn off and, and the tree roots are really just dismantling the curves out there. So that road is really becoming more difficult to traverse.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Want to move on to parks?
All right, parks. Chaplin Linear Park, you know, that is a project that was well underway a few years ago. So we have concept and preliminary ideas on paper there with that. We'd like to reinvigorate that, get that back rolling. Master plan, major park master planning, we call it. I know there was a workshop with town council held regarding this. There, there's three parks there that we have funding for this year. We have funding to begin surveying and hire a consultant to begin master planning. Mid Island Track is the old Planters Road Golf Course off Port Royal, bound by Dillon Union Cemetery and William Hilton. Chaplain and Crossings Park, these have been parks that have been around for a long time, but still a bunch of vacant land in, amidst those parks and, and they could be upgraded and improved, we think. So, so all four of these kind of fall into the same, same category, except for the Mid Island being a brand-new, brand-new park. And the, the existing parks, I'll go into a bit. We're going to recommend a park playground up at Jarvis and, and the picnic shelter at Parker Field. Picnic Shelter, Parker Field, that was talked about this year, but it, it didn't get done. But we would like to do that next year. And Island Rec Center, they each year have an annual list of capital facility improvements they like to request and, and keep that place up to standards and, and make it nice for everyone. So, so we'll look at those. And under the new parks category, there's two, two parks listed, Patterson Family Property Park and the Taylor Family Property Park. The Patterson Park is on Marshland Road. We own about three acres across from Alex Patterson Drive, bordering to High Marsh at Broad Creek. And, and I understand there was some CDBG leftover funding for that this year, but we would need to supplement that with new funds to get that fully designed and built. And Taylor Family Park is up off of a Wild Horse Road, I believe, and would be a small neighborhood park.
And those two parks were defined out of a study that, that looked at context to neighborhoods and all that?
I believe so. Jennifer Ray may be able to speak to that about the master planning efforts and neighborhood discussions.
Jennifer out there?
Yeah, I'm here. I don't think you can see me because of the share screen, but we have two, those two projects were identified quite some years ago when there was a push to have the, there be a park in every neighborhood, so to speak. And then we changed plans because several of the neighborhoods didn't actually want the parks. Now those have risen up. We had a life estate on the Taylor property that now has come to where we could develop that one. But as Jeff mentioned, there is funding for Patterson, some funding needs to be supplemented, but there is not a funding source identified yet for Taylor. In the most recent Parks and Rec Master Plan, the consultant already knew that we had those as future parks and just identified them as such and said to, you know, recommended moving forward as we had originally planned.
Thank you, Jennifer.
There is an opportunity this year with our CDBG funding to allocate additional funds to Patterson, if that's the direction that the community and ultimately town council want to go. And then there could be an opportunity in the next year to also use CDBG funds for the Taylor Family Park. Those are in locations of town that are within that, that zone where we could spend those funds.
All right, thank you. Any committee members with questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this relates to these parks in the packet. The other day they talked about new walking paths at a park on the north end. Was that mid, was that Mid Island or?
Yes, ma'am. That's at the Mid Island Track where in, in the recent past facilities maintenance and stormwater engineering worked together to clean it up enough that it's safe for people to go in and enjoy walking right now. But long-term, we would be developing plans that would build it out a little bit more than just walking on an old golf course.
Got you. Thank you.
But that, that's a location that, that you just read about. Okay.
And how is that, Jennifer? Is that, people would use the, the old car paths that are in there?
Yes, there's a little bit of parking over off of Union Cemetery, a little gravel parking lot. And then you just have to make sure you stay where it says it's okay to walk. We put up some split rail fence and tried to keep people in, in the safe, safe spots of it. Because the whole site hasn't been cleared out for use by the community. We're trying to maintain the wetland buffers, the buffer along the drainage, there's a large, major drainage way in there, and then some wildlife corridors were preserved.
Jennifer, could you remind us how many acres that is?
Oh, total? That's a really good question. I don't have that in front of me. 103 is sticking in my mind, but I would rather find out for sure and then just, we'll send an email out to the committee so that you know, or we can talk about it at our March 11th meeting and make sure you know exactly how big that is.
Yeah, it's not that urgent. We can wait. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, on Chaplain Linear Park, does that include whatever means there would be a crossing on 278?
Yes, sir. I mean, that's part of it. You know, the obvious crossing right now is that Singleton Beach Road, Harold's Diner, there's a signalized crosswalk. But, but if there was some other, other means, you know, an overpass or something, we wanted it to be even safer, then, then yes, that would be considered as part of that planning project.
Okay. Yeah, I remember some early studies were showing an elevated crossing.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, you want to move on to the next item?
Okay. And I just looked up for Mr. O'Neil. Jennifer was exactly right, 103 acres on the Mid Island Track.
Does that, Jeff, does that include the, I believe that when there's some land set aside for the church to move?
That is... No, it does not include that. That's the, the total parcel as it exists now, just what I clicked on at the IAS. So yes, if there was an element carved out for, you know, the church, just deduct it from that 103.
Okay.
Okay. And, and the last few categories are existing facilities. We had the Arts Campus renovation, that's up at the Arts Center. That would be a master planning and concept development type thing. And, and I understand it would endeavor to be some partnership with the USC B perhaps. But yeah, master planning study there at that existing facility. And new facilities, you know, the fire hydrant expansion, Fire Rescue works with the PSD to target areas needing better hydrant coverage and develops a program to seek funding each year to install more hydrants where needed. And the last category, beach maintenance, you know, beach maintenance, beach management, this is a, a never-ending, ongoing thing. So we do survey, monitoring, wildlife monitoring, et cetera, year-round. And we are needing to get ready for the next big renourishment project. You know, that's one of the things Scott loved to do and, and he and I just recently, a few weeks ago, talked about our, our time remaining at the town of Hilton Head Island. And he said, well, I'm at least going to be here for the next beach project because I love those projects. And so I've been talking with the beach consultants and we are at a stage now where we're going to need to do bathymetric surveys of the ocean floor in the areas of the borrowed pits. There are four shoals or banks at the outlets to the, the creeks there, Calabogie and Porro Sound. And so we need to survey those and then we will take core samples to see, you know, sand grade size, which, which pits would work best and use that data in the design and permitting of the next beach project.
Thank you. Any committee members with questions?
No.
I guess Todd, might, might I ask, is there a starting point here for a, a budget each year? Or do we just list and priority the, the items and then the funding comes from different places over the, over the year?
Yeah, I think from what I gather, Sean or Jeff, you can correct me, I think we just identify the priorities and try to rank them the best that we think they are. And then that gets passed along to Planning Commission.
Yeah, Todd's correct in that when we go through CIP Committee and Planning Commission, it's really what do you believe are the priority projects that we need to then take to finance to figure out what funding capacity we have and recommend ultimately a list of projects for the upcoming CIP budget cycle. As I mentioned earlier, we're trying to develop that longer view, a three-year strategic look and a 10-year program. And once that's done, you'll be able to see kind of the funding capacity, you know, that picture and you'll have more context for the decisions. But at this point, like you say, it's just kind of, here's the projects that are candidates. There might be a few others that pop up between now and the 11th. You may identify something, you may talk to colleagues or other groups that have projects that are, that you might bring forward at the next meeting. But no, no budget piece yet until it gets vetted for budget discussion with council. But no, no budget piece yet until it gets vetted for budget discussion with council.
All right, I guess we'll move on to future schedule of our committee meetings. And we're scheduled for March 11th is our, our next meeting. Sean or Jeff, is, is there a timeline? I mean, there's ultimately where this has to end up being completed by a certain date? Is that March 11th? Is that the sort of towards the tail end of that?
We would like to get a recommendation from the CI Committee to Planning Commission at the March 11th meeting. Really would like to be able to have a meaningful discussion with finance and the new town manager in early April to kind of put the funding pieces together in, in sort of the initial stages of the budget development. Because once we get to late April and early May, that's introduction of the budget to council and then they go through that exercise over the course of a month or so to, before they're ready to adopt a budget. So that's kind of the, the notion behind the schedule that we've laid out.
I just had mentioned to Jeff that sometimes in the past, we've gone through a couple rounds of meetings to get to that point, once we start getting into the priorities and all that. I just throw that out, this, this out there because I did have some initial conversations with Scott about, you know, where things stood in terms of meeting in public and, you know, that sort of thing. And we had sort of a casual discussion, and this was, you know, maybe a month ago about, you know, because a lot of times when we would meet, there would be a number of public interests there attending the meeting. And obviously, you know, this forum can, can serve that. But just, we were just bouncing around ideas, you know, is there a big, a bigger place to meet that would allow spacing, that would allow a little bit more in-person dialogue? Or I don't know where you guys are, you know, on your thoughts on that.
Yeah, actually staff has just been extending, remote work has been extended through the end of March. And so we're trying to limit exposure to a bunch of staff in Town Hall, obviously still open to the public, you know, other than the council workshop, which was very limited attendance. You know, we really haven't had any board committee or commission, you know, meetings in person. And I, and I understand we're trying to get as much input and meaningful discussion on this as possible. So we'll, we'll try to look at whatever outlets we can to gather input. I encourage you as commissioners to talk to, to talk to people and bring that information to the meetings. We do have the benefit of getting some information from the Bike Advisory Committee. We had staff meet with the Island Rec Center and we have Fire and Rescue that's provided input for CIP from their emergency response side. So, you know, we're trying to piece together this the best we can without having that open, open public forum as far as meeting in one place.
Okay. Well, I know that things have changed since, I mean, obviously Scott and I had that conversation, but we were just trying to look for a better way to, for to reach out.
Yeah, we keep kind of guessing, hey, another two weeks, another, another month, you know, we kind of keep bumping it along. I just think based on the timeframe to get a budget, to start really getting into developing the budget, looking now into April before staff, you know, staff was kind of allowed back in Town Hall. And, and that's again, just the new target date. Probably unlikely we could have a large, you know, a large public meeting with a border commission at this point.
Thank you. All right, any other discussions from the committee members? None or take a motion to adjourn? All right?
Okay.
All right, thank you, everybody. Adjourned. Thank you, Jeff.